Come to order. Gracious, we follow you. Thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us Lord, and just thank you for everything you do. Oh, we ask you just go with us tonight during this meeting and everything we do and say it will be said here tonight.
Amen. Let's leave it.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under your honor, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'd like to thank you everyone for coming out tonight to our incredible. I'm a German. Thing and uh. It was all German. The perspective business is. You can ring on. So, start off the road call. Curtis is back there in the back. Jeff is back there in the back. Mr. Mindy has escaped again. Where's she going to? Uh, six, he's about two's here, Tyler's here, Franklin's here, I'm here, and Mr. Jennings is here, and Miss Sherry is here, and our illustrious Mr. Lord is. And we have a full house tonight. Quite some good to have you back there. I tell you, I had a real lot of silence. So, uh. With that being said, uh. Y'all had a chance to look over the agenda? Alright, we have a motion and a second approval of the agenda. All those in favor, simply probably say aye.
Aye.
Host, we share it, it is approved, that's written. Next up is the. Proven of the minutes, no, no minutes?
No. Sorry, didn't have enough time.
Oh.
We just had a meeting last night.
We did, we did.
They didn't get a meeting, I was off on Friday.
Do we need to do a well defended check on Elijah?
I know, he's been two days in a row. Has anyone seen him?
I seen him at Family Dollar the other day.
Okay, he was okay. Just making sure.
He's still here.
He's still here.
That's okay, he's not talking about the city council. But anyhow, we'll uh table the minutes for the next meeting. With that being said, uh public participation. Need to fill out one of these if anybody wants to speak. Or if I got yours.
You do. After with the statements speaking.
And first of all, you should clearly use your signature full name and address for the record, comment, and then within forty minutes.
Do you want to wait till against to that agenda?
Did you want to wait?
I can't, I can do either way.
Can we?
Well, it ends up the.
Unless, that's the only thing you're talking about, right?
Yeah. You want me to talk about something else? I could talk about chickens.
No.
We used to, chickens on Main Street. They were out there full force this morning, but I didn't put that in my agenda, so we can move on. Thank you very much.
No chickens.
Well, this is fine, the agenda starts off to talk about it for the code enforcement board section of the agenda. If that's okay, thank you.
Informational items. Our next town council meeting will be April the fifteenth. Uh, at six P M. here. The next uh W three C four meeting is the seventeenth. It will be in Old Creek. It must be earlier. Our community moving down. Is Thursday the eighteenth, okay? Uh, there's an email that's been sent out to the county and I, I got the biggest chuck a lot of that they see.
Yes.
That's amazing.
Sent to Wilbur, got tossed to Ally, got tossed to Dog, now I got tossed to Amanda, so. Some people just identified that Jim Lee's is available.
Why, they have a calendar that you sign off on the next year, it's been that complicated.
I thought it went from Wilbur to Amanda, and then Amanda to.
You to Ally, Ally to Dog, Dog kicked it to Amanda.
And that happened, can you go in there? There's a calendar on the front desk, and when you're gonna get the key, you ask for the date and they look on the calendar, because I've done it from school plenty of times, and it's not supposed to be on a copy.
Well, it's like an upstairs Doug, but he's just.
Oh, hopefully tomorrow.
Anyhow, we're going to have a movie, eighteen, the Jim Lee. What's the name of the movie?
On the side of the.
You can, you can talk to this one here, I live.
Undecided. We got a list in the back of the packet room, even though I never heard of our movie.
What?
No, you don't have kids.
That life for the town of Boston scholarship application is Friday, April the nineteenth. How many do we have?
The guidance guys that use it holds until they turn it on at the same time.
Okay.
But um, I'll, I'll check in with my seniors in the morning.
I think you're gonna have quite a few.
Good, that'll be good. Uh, our next code enforcement board meeting is Wednesday, April the twenty-fourth. Uh. At five P M. I'm assuming that will be here, of course. Uh, the next uh Red of the Mighty Food Bank, Lolo Food Drive is the twenty-sixth. Of April, and of course that is out at the park. Do not get there before night there. Uh, teacher appreciation week is May the sixth to the fourth. Miss Sherry, did you decide what we're gonna do on that?
Well, Ms. Sue sent me ideas, but I was gonna see what y'all thought, because the places she's talking about, I ain't ever been to them, so.
What? Humble cookie? You've never heard of humbly?
I've heard of it, I just never had anything to eat it.
I've never had something.
I didn't like the bun cakes either, but I'm just odd, I never.
I don't like any of them. Deliver cookies, they're like midnight cookies kind of thing?
They do a different like cookie of the day and they literally deliver. Haven't they in that front office that's baked such cookies all the time, so I get home made cookies.
Okay.
I'm spoiled.
It was just a thought.
So, so I'm spoiled.
Okay, uh, anyhow, that's kinda, so we, we need to push forward with that. Uh, next beautiful Boston day, the number, number six is Saturday, May the eighteenth. At ten A M. And we have decided, Scott, what was it again?
If you, if you wanna do the cemetery, I researched a Tony Collins, and she hooked me up with somebody who can get us the materials to clean the, um, some of the graves, if that's what you wanna do.
I was thinking, I was thinking I would bring my uh pressure washer and pressure wash the sign.
I got one too. I, I, I tell you something, I couldn't, but um. I tell you, uh, that, that thing, the stuff where they clean your food, they close, they close, or you can get it up at uh H up here. It, it, well, when I clean all the graves, I mean, the ones up by the school and the one over by me.
Yeah.
I, I did them all and then they cleaned that, we were doing stuff all over, like, you wouldn't believe.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Alright, uh. Well, that's, that's a working problem, as I said, okay?
We're, we're planning on doing the cemetery.
Okay, and, and I got a pressure washer too, and I'm gonna use it right.
Are you gonna invite up into two groups to do? Well, it's in Texas, you're gonna do one in each group.
Why can't we only do the one?
We could probably do all of them, probably. You'd never have enough help really, so we'll probably just stick with.
Have we not?
It takes, it takes a pretty good little meeting.
Yeah, exactly, we'll probably just focus on ours for now.
Okay.
I'm less, I'm less a plethora of people, just as I chose.
We also have the one up by Old Bronson High School, too. We get it over. Sounds good, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, it is, oh, okay.
And in the last couple, beautiful Bronson days, we've had less than ten people, so. Like you said, unless we get a lot of people out there.
I'm gonna see what I can do. My kids have a, a service project they have to do, so I might recommend that they participate in.
Great.
Lunch, lunch is always provided.
Be careful, because some of the graves are old and you don't wanna.
Yes, yes.
Hey, give him.
Okay, hold on. Sue, that's everything. Sue, that's everything on mine.
Can we add something to the um informational items? On April the thirteenth, they have an amnesty day at the county, so if anybody has any used tires that they wanna get rid of, they can take them out there for free. Gonna have to be. Vehicle tires.
And the thirteen, yes, together. And there are limited like twenty-five.
Per person?
But, but.
Tires?
Per person, and usually it's like three dollars a tire to dispose of tires.
I, 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 I know, I know we used to do that. And when they had that cleanup day, too, we would have those days on the same day. So that, if people had tires and stuff, they would take them, and we would get a uh, what uh? The long thing.
We get them, yeah, yeah, we still do that.
And they put tires in there.
Yeah, they put them right over here.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, we still do that.
Okay, Sue.
Okay, so first on my agenda tonight is ordinance number twenty-four dash zero one. I'll read the title for the record. An ordinance of the town of Bronson relating to the operation of golf carts, requirements and parameter therefore adoption of state law with respect thereto, and providing an effective date. So, um, to get ready up to speed. We researched various ordinances regarding golf cart operations because a couple of our residents got stopped on golf carts because we didn't have an ordinance. So we modeled this one off of the city of Cedar Key. Um, in ours, all golf carts, we need to have efficient brakes, reliable steering, safe tires, rear mirror, rear reflectors, headlights, brake lights, turn signals, and windshield. And of course now all ordinances require a business impact estimate, and um, for us, we feel like there's no discernible economic impact on any businesses in town. So this is a second reading, and if adopted tonight, it will take effect. And then if anybody gets started.
Any other discussions? I will entertain a motion.
My motion, we accept ordinance number twenty-four dash one as written.
Okay. We have a motion and a second on uh ordinance twenty-four dash zero one, regulating golf cart operation inside and only inside the streets of Bronson. Uh, city.
In no county road.
No county road, yes, okay.
To the same. Main Street, that's kinda road.
Yeah, they do it on county roads.
On State Road twenty-four, twenty-seven.
That's fair, I'm gonna give you the market. So uh, with that being said, all those in favor, signify the same aye. Those saying motion carries, we will have golf carts on the streets of Bronson.
Can you put this in the next um newsletter?
Yes, so in the next newsletter, I'm putting in all of the ordinances and resolutions that have been passed this year. Some of the bottom ideas to what we've done, what we've been doing. Alright, number two on my agenda is, um. Well, I put in your packet a copy of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, which is something that we considered. Almost exactly two years ago, so um, I know that obviously Vice Mayor Pelosi and Council, I'm sure we're not on the council at this time, so just kinda give a little bit of an update as to why this is here. So originally, um, I put this together because we had several complaints about noise on Stevens Street. Stevens Street is, um, if you're going down Port Street toward the, um, Lee Lee County Sheriff's Office, it's on the right. And the complaints were that there were several semis back there. That they're starting their trucks in the early morning hours, like. Between like two in the morning and five in the morning and letting them rock, and so people were complaining about the noise, you know, being woken up at three in the morning or four in the morning. Um, at the time, the council decided they did not wanna put this ordinance in place, so we abandoned it. The reason I'm bringing it back up, and again, it's not, this is just for discussion at this point, um, in your council packet, I gave you guys some pictures, um, which I had Curtis go take today. So what's happening is in that area of Stevens, Davis, Standridge, all that area back there, which again is all residential. These trucks are, again, there's two of them, there's two semis back there, um, are tearing up our roads, and you can see the pictures that Curtis took too. That's my bigger concern, and yes, the noise is one thing, and there's, you know, like I said, several people that made a complaint about that, but. These are our streets, these are not county roads, these are not state roads, these are roads that need to be maintained by the town of Bronson. So if we have, you know, semis back there that are tearing up the streets, we're gonna have to obviously repair these roads. So I'm bringing it back up to see how this council feels about putting an ordinance in place. That would restrict semis from parking in residential neighborhoods.
Is there a weight limit on the roads now, kind of roads that the town maintains?
I don't think so. And this has, you know, weight limits and years of, you know, exactly how much you can have and when you can park them, and, you know, makes exceptions for like delivering drivers like Amazon trucks and G F L, you know, all that kinda stuff. Like I said, I, I would just be concerned about the fact that, you know, these people are tearing up our roads, and we've got, they're gonna at some point have people complaining about not just the noise, but also asking for these roads to be repaired.
Any bigger questions, wait, what's on the list?
I think the, I think all the roads within the cities, um. Are not for commercial use, for the big trucks and all that. I think more, you know, for pedestrian, for, you know, cars, trucks, but not commercial vehicles. Um, especially the one at the intersection of Scambridge and Stevens Street, around Manhole. That's gonna be a big issue, because if they're K B N right there, that's the manhole, and that's everything through the city goes through that manhole going to Stevens Street. So that's a, that could be a big issue right there.
Any other discussions?
I've been about a solution, that's.
I actually got a phone call about this, about. Curtis, how long ago was it?
Two weeks ago?
And one of the neighbors was doing a job for me, and he said, I just wanna let you know this, when that truck goes through there. He said, I was sitting in my yard, one day, and that manhole cover actually was doing this, that truck goes by. And he says it's floating, and I said, well, wait a second, that can't be floating, he said, well, something wrong, he said, but I tell you, the road is moving up and down with that manhole. So, in that picture right there, you see that manhole cover is, is, it is collapsed around it? And again, just like Curtis just said, it's just a, it's, it's fixed in half, so. That is the main, the main line going through our city.
And remember how much it costs right now to pay Wilson, two million?
Two million miles it was costing right now. It's okay.
Sue.
I don't know whether that's true or not, it is charged.
Well, that's what it really costs, but that's what we're being charged to do, one quarter mile, one. What's that for?
I got a question. What does Miss Virginia have to say about that? He's over the road. What do you think of him?
How you doing, Mr. Elijah?
I'm doing, I'm running late.
It's nice.
I was just trying to help everybody, but. I'm a little overwhelmed all over myself, but I have to get here, I was just passing, I almost missed this thing.
I'm glad you did.
Big, I'm sure this woman called me, because I've been calling you.
I speak to him, Lord, because I didn't send you to me.
That's what everyone told me, I ain't.
Go ahead, Virginia, you got the floor, I'm just running.
You bet.
We want to go from now.
I actually have more problems with the unnecessary heavy traffic than somebody pulling their rig in their yard, me personally. Like I, I just. And that's what I was saying about. When Miss Nelson was asking about the traffic, you know, that before, on School Street, where they go out, where they could go, you know, behind the speedway. Instead of coming in through town, um. But I. But something has to be done. I don't, I don't see why this one manhole is not in asphalt. The ones on the side, it seems like that's a really bad place.
That's where they're.
Yeah, I think it used to be.
It used to be.
And uh.
Is it dirt now?
Yeah, from semi-con, we go on top of it every day.
Now they easy resolutions, wait a minute.
Do we have, do we have?
This is fifteen hours.
Do we have?
Mail?
No, 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 just maybe commercial trucks like that.
I mean, I think there's two within that neighborhood.
That's the only two, but we have any real issues?
I think in that neighborhood, there's, there's two trucks.
But then we got other issues, um, like, that, isn't that how we got the main water issue right there on the corner of Glover and Twenty-four, was. Them, you know, cutting through that grass? I think the weight limit idea is probably the best one, is the best solution, because.
If I'm not.
That's the issue.
If I'm not mistaken, I think.
It's not from their truck, it's the weight.
Commercial trucks, there is a weight limit, a road that they're not supposed to be on.
Could you? Could you do, I don't know if City of Chief one, they may have something, I just know that in City of Chief one, the semis themselves, just the, I don't know what you call it, just the. Truck, well, thank you, the cab, they can drive, but the trailer, they have to park, they park it at Murphy's, not Murphy's, what's the other one we first came in?
King Room, part of the.
King Room, the new one. They park their roads back there, or just the chassis of it, but the actual cab, they'll take home, so I don't know if you could do something like that.
That's just Bobcat.
Well, I have a friend that has a walk truck, and he parks the trailer with everything at the gas station, but he'll take the front part.
Yeah.
Never Bob, never Bob till back.
Oh, is that, I thought you meant like a Bobcat. No, no.
Sorry.
He's Bob till back at his house.
Which is, which is not a big deal.
What do you mean, that being?
But all, they could pass the ordinance for no two trucks, that, that would eliminate unnecessary, only thing you could, could do in the city would be to deliver. Or pick up, and that would be it. If you go through Atlanta, you're not allowed to be in the city of Atlanta. If you don't have a delivery or a pickup, I promise you, I know this, and there's several other places that's like that too, because of how bad it is in the river.
That's very common, I mean, both the places I've lived, here in Bury and when I lived in Tampa, you cannot park.
But where, what does.
The whole place has got, got police that's patrolling those areas, and then we, like I say, we can get an ordinance and, but the thing up out of it, getting it enforced, that's the next thing.
Well, you've got that within this ordinance, I mean, it does say.
Also, where are they gonna park?
So, at Stonies.
That'd be a problem.
Can they park at Stonies?
I would think they could, I mean, they may have to speak to Stonies, but I think for Stonie, I mean, it's trucks.
Yeah.
I'm.
Early, let's people park down. Yeah.
Yeah, she does, yeah.
And if they have those D O T licenses, they don't wanna get fined with anything, because if it goes on the record, that's.
That ain't good.
You know, I, I think probably, in this case right here, probably we can do like we do, is reach out to Chief, and go to the, the cities in the county.
Yeah, but those two places are different only because they have their own police departments. You cannot, because just like, if you park on the, I tell you, if you park on the sidewalk. That's a good place, but if you park on the sidewalk in Williston, you will get a fact ticket, because they have their own police department. Well, we, we have, we have some uh.
Thank you.
We have some authority about the situation.
I think it would be good to reach out to, make the stuff. Yeah, it would be D O T to, D O T asking about.
We, we don't have that many, I don't, and I imagine that if you spoke to the people and let them know the ordinance would go through, not that we have to, but I guarantee you, they would be willing to work. It's either that, or hey, we're gonna let you know if we find it on our property, then we will find you.
Well, you handle it.
No, it's all fine, you can get to. Everybody's listening, something you can get to.
So, we. So were you, does this ordinance, just the trucks, or just the trailers, or both, or?
This was a, this was a parking. Anything, any commercial vehicle, I think.
Right, parking.
And the question was, which one? Before was because of so many trucks out there in Bronson.
I think we need to. Right, see. I think we need to change the wording of commercial truck, because. It all, technically, my truck's commercial, my truck's got commercial insurance on it, it's registered to a business name.
It's a waiver, it's written in the mouth.
But it's still, a commercial truck, if somebody made a complaint and said, well, that's a commercial truck, that's.
But it's not in excess of fifteen thousand pounds. So, if you leave the word here as commercial truck, you add a weight like limit with it, then it has to specify something on it.
Yeah, I mean, if I'm with the, you said a load of hay behind it, I'm twenty thousand pounds.
If you want, we got any thoughts on this?
Everything on here is relevant, it's just a value judgment you have to make. The one thought I did have is, there may be a weight limit in general, uh, from Department of Transportation or Department of Sanctions on Washington Drive on State Roads. I don't know, but I can check that.
That's why I probably have a decent reference of what their regulations are, what they can't, can't drive on anyway.
Exactly.
Well, I'm gonna make a recommendation here. Let's uh, let's do our homework. Think about, you know, the different perspectives, just like Tyler just brought up, the very valid statement, in fact, if he has a truck, he is commercial. And uh, I used to be the same way. But now, but you know, you, you can't, just because somebody working here works for somebody, whatever, he drives a truck home.
That's, yeah.
You know, to his home, you, we can't, they can't park down there and chase them down.
So if somebody drives a plumbing truck, a box truck home, and parks it in their driveway, and the man's.
Yeah, we got a bunch of that.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be the same limit as a.
Yeah.
As a regular.
But as I'm saying, all it says is commercial truck, and that's what the wording says in the, so if somebody still complains, then.
Commercial truck is a semi-trailer truck or tractor-trailer, a truck with two or more rear axles, a truck with a G V W R in excess of fifteen thousand pounds. Or truck or trailer combination, excluding a trailer used solely for non-commercial recreational purposes resulting in a combined factors, G V W R in excess of fifteen thousand pounds. So yours would not fall into that.
Yeah.
So it's good, defines what that.
Okay.
Let me reiterate, like, I think you were gonna do it earlier, but it would be a good idea to check in particular, do better.
Okay.
See what they've got.
When you bury any D O T. Yeah, sure, we got a lot of semis on both side streets.
Yeah.
And they don't have, they have response department.
Trains got those.
I thought, I thought they just got on fifth and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they got a forty-five, make sure you start it good.
Well, I thought with the black side, right? So you're trying to find something comparable that doesn't have a police department, see how they enforce it.
Yeah, that's on enforcement standpoint, yeah.
You don't like the way it's written in here?
No, I mean, if that's, I didn't refer it down to see, if, if it would exclude somebody like. That, like me having a trailer driving, I'm still overweight, or, but anything like that, or somebody driving a box truck to park it at their house, then if it excludes all that kinda stuff that we're buying, we're just specifically talking about tractor-trailers.
That's really what you're talking about.
Can we, have we reached out to these people that are parking? Do, are they aware that this is a complaint that we're in?
They are well aware, and I had to basically tell them after you guys decided against it, that they were okay, probably just two years ago.
I just, I didn't know if they're not Beijing.
No, nobody's brought this up, this was specifically a conversation with Curtis concerned about the records.
Yes.
I would be a heavy though, if Stonies was not open. I'm just being honest with you, because I would not wanna, and I've driven them trucks, and I would not want to put my trailer across through Stonies, and then something happens to it, and I'm responsible for it. Just saying, but the fact that Stonies is open, it's lit up, I have it passed by there at night where it's not lit up, and I don't know if he charges for them to park there or whatever, but that's the only difference to me.
Well, Miss Virginia, I can say yes, which I'm happy to, and you're right, he's not charging. I don't thank you, because it's really not that many people park there.
I, I, I'd be perfectly, if you ask him if you can leave a truck there, he's gonna tell you no.
I don't understand how Merlin's seen that many people.
Now, Merlin, Merlin's gonna charge him, he's gonna say, yeah.
Does it make them responsible for if you park there?
Absolutely.
If they're.
That's what I'm saying.
If they're guarding the car, then they gotta be responsible for it.
If, if there's, if, if it's gonna make them, I mean, but you park at other places and they have signs that say they are not responsible for the compensation.
Yeah, but it's still be. It's still a headache. It's still a headache, yeah, it's not worth the headache, I guess is what I'm saying, for the property.
Not as soon, I'd be able to. Place to be living now.
Anyway, here's the thing though, if, if we don't, we don't do anything, and that stuff collapses, or we have to fix the road, they ain't gonna chip in on it.
Oh, no, we.
So what are we gonna do then?
Oh, no, we, we definitely do, we definitely do something, but we need to figure out enforcement side of it, and then, I'm sure there's some kind of DOT regulation already in place that states what they're allowed to drive on already.
Pretty much has to be.
There ha, I mean.
And it's very relevant to find out what it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Eighty thousand pounds maximum weight.
I know, that's the, that's the heavy driving capacity, but I bet there's a regulation somewhere on what they, what, what side of streets they can't drive on.
What's, what's tearing up this road, right here, that particular situation, is when he comes in with it, and he's checking that trailer around there, whatever, trying to pack in there to park it and everything, that's what would.
Them tires spinning, them tires spinning on asphalt, it's eating away.
He knows that, okay.
I have another question, did that truck parking, so when they park on the right way, are they supposed to be so far away from the road, away from the, they're supposed to park on the right way at all? Okay, so, when you come out of, um, Glover, on the end, like you're going towards the school, was that twenty-four, twenty, yeah, there's a commercial truck that parks right there, and you're at the stop sign, you cannot see the road, and they're, they're, rent this house, um, the, um, house right before you get to the fence, the gray house there. Um, hasn't been there the last couple of days, so he must be out on the road, but when he's in, he parks right there. So everyone, when you go to, when I go to work, you gotta almost get in the road from the end of Glover to be able to see a truck.
She told me too.
Yeah, I've been trying to catch him, I've been trying to catch him home, um, because there's, there's two water lines right there where he's parking, it's an AC line, and then it's a PVC line. And they have a big leak right there, if you see where I got it parked, that's why I marked it, so he wouldn't.
You recently had a big leak there?
Same thing that happened.
No, a couple of years ago, they had a big leak there, but it's an old AC line there.
So he hasn't been, it hasn't been there like, you know, weeks, so he must be on the road or something, but, um, he, he was there, and I actually said something to the, the, his girlfriend there.
We, we have something.
We can't see right there, the sound, it's like they're parking.
I think we may have to go DOT, because the state road twenty-four.
Yeah.
It'd be the same thing when they had it, particularly. But it shouldn't be parking as DOT. You gotta get in the road to. That's the gift alone.
Well, she moved that, she, she put that on the side of the building, because as soon as she saw the moving, she, she completely changed that.
Yeah, I asked.
Yeah, she, she's now parking on the side, she's hoping that, uh, Mr. Attio does the same thing, because that's the side that he's parking on now. She was trying to not make any conflict with them being there.
Well, I, I gotta ask a question out here, like, how did they get access to even over that end of the getty? They could have been way down this cross street, wherever, why didn't they believe, get, get over there?
She reached out to them.
She was trying to get.
But I was trying, so, so, supposed to be so smart to not allow that.
You're talking about the Chick-fil-A truck?
Yeah.
She owns that.
She owns that property.
Second.
That's her business.
It's all you, and you didn't ask him, it's all in New York.
That's her property, because that brings a.
That's what I was asking about there, but I, I give a chance about, I guarantee I would win. So it, it couldn't be.
She had, uh. She already moved it onto the side of the building.
I'll, you're telling this. They were gonna put it down there at Merlin's corner, down there, Phil, he filled it with.
How much it cost?
But it's all been, just all the water there, not going over there.
She was trying to bring, she was bringing something different here.
Yeah, I mean, ain't nothing wrong with the idea of the concept.
All, all the woman's trying to do is get some people there to run a business, so.
See, they, they get up there, then you see, there'll be a lot of people around it, they'll be there.
And the kids love it, so.
So, it's always a lot, always a lot.
And it's only every, in, in three months, they might have been here twice, so it's not like, it's ever.
I thought it was like ten years ago.
Yeah.
My kids are texting me, Keen, and then texting me at eight o'clock in the morning, Chick-fil-A truck's coming today, okay, I'm happy, I'm not going.
Christmas or something.
I'm going. Just give me guidance, something, let me, let me just check on her.
I think turning on, looking at the DOT regulations.
Oh, yeah.
Then we can check with, you're probably the best one for, I mean, just their own little office, but.
I think the city of Robinson is gonna have to, um, do a charter or ordinance, stay in the maximum that we want on our roads.
On the city streets, correct.
They should.
Colin said, if you, if you do find a situation like that truck that she was talking about, like it, put some, go out there, put some barricade parkers or something up there where they were parking it, and they're gone. Right over, and you got it.
They don't own that property, they park it on the, you know.
But see, what she's talking about, that's DOT, that's state road twenty-four, that's DOT right away, they shouldn't be parking DOT right away anyway.
They just use.
I'm still trying to figure it out.
I know what you're talking about now, I, I, yeah.
You can't see when you come out.
No, I know where, I thought you were talking about the one that used to park on, uh.
At the end of my system, at the end of Glover.
Some of the, I think, the one that used to park on Standbridge.
On the right and left.
The Detworth Ward, you got the Jason's house, so you used to.
On the right.
Yeah, right there.
When you get to the stop sign, it's right there.
I think I remember down that road, because I.
It's on the, he's actually on twenty-four.
Yeah.
Like, you can't, you're blocking it, you can't get to the end of Glover.
You, you're at that stop sign.
Well, when the, uh, let's recall, I'm sorry, uh, you drive down there, you see what I'm saying.
Oh, yeah, I will, I know what she's talking about, but I don't normally go that way to go home, so I've never seen him.
You should read it to them.
Table, table this for the next meeting, pending more.
She said you were just for the discussion.
This was just the old resolution, I heard, when it's, I just gave it some guidance, Mr. Wetherman, you guys were even interested, because the last time you went off, so, okay, I'll go. Okay, next up, resolution twenty-four dash zero five, a resolution of the town council of the town of Bronson and the county of Levy, Florida, authorizing the town manager to execute such agreements or future agreements with the federal emergency management agency through the floor of the division of emergency management, as may be required and or in the best interest of the town, its residents, and the community at large. So what is going on here, um, Levy County is getting, I think exactly, almost six point one million dollars in hurricane Adele relief, and municipalities are being encouraged to submit projects on the local mitigation strategy list. So right now, obviously, all municipalities are involved in this LNS group. Um, we have three different projects on there, but it had to be labeled as HMGP, which stands for hazard mitigation grant program. So the only one of the three that we have is basically this road, the horrible road that we get the big flag behind us. Um, so as you know, in our packet last week, Mid Tower put in a, um, SCOP grant to pave that road. This is doing something slightly different, it would be paved, but it's also elevating the road to try and get rid of the, sort of, um, so I'm, it's on call, it's on call. So the way it works is they need to have, we did the same resolution last year for FDOT, they want something saying that I have authority to sign these, um, applications, grant applications, on behalf of the town, these offices. So hopefully between those two grants, we'll definitely get something done to this road.
We need to be prepared when they, if we do get approved for them to raise it, we need to be prepared to raise the parking lot, probably worse, if not, the order gonna float.
Well, I don't think it's gonna be raised that much, I mean, they were, when I reached out to Mid Tower, they were thinking maybe a couple of inches, and I'm, I'm not trying to, I'm just a little bit to try to, and then, you know, they might do some sort of stormwater.
If they add a drain or something, I'm not saying, but, I, if they, if it gets too much, they're gonna float, float back to the.
They're gonna have to taper it so it goes toward the retention bond.
Correct.
On the other side of the road, the countryside.
So just kind of look into the rankings.
Uh, how, what do you really think? Do you think what you wanna do, what you wanna do, is that feasible, what you think should happen?
What, them raising the road?
Yeah.
If the state wants to give the money for us to raise, raise the road and go and repave it at the same time, yeah.
So you're for it?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, you know.
I'll even make the motion for it, make a motion under resolution twenty-four dash zero five.
I think it's.
All right, we have a motion in the segment to authorize the town manager to execute agreements with FEMA and FDA, you remember, on, uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go, go, you can carry it.
All right, next is proposal for grant services by Gateway Grant Writing Administration Services. So a little background here, um, the Waukesas Water and Race Water Parking Board recently enlisted lovely Shannon Williams right here, of Gateway Grant Writing Administration Services, to act as the grant writer administrator for the board. We've also been working with Shannon recently, um, she's been doing some grant, uh, writing for us from the fire department, I think you've submitted two so far, two grant applications. Um, we're gonna continue to use Fred Fox Enterprises, who we've used in the past, obviously, but Fred's, Fred Fox's, um, this sort of sweet spot, if you will, is doing CDVG grants, like we have right now, to redo all of the residential water meters, and Ford App, which of course is how we did the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant for the park. So Shannon's gonna really concentrate her efforts on things like the fire department, um, I've kind of been looking for grants to redo like the roof at the, um, the library, so kind of everything that Freddie isn't doing, so we'll kind of have everything, everything covered, if you will. Um, and then in her proposal, and again, this proposal was raised similar to the one that the Waukesas Board looked at, um, her scope of services includes funding deeds analysis, grant funding research, grant proposal development and review, grant administration, and monthly annual reports. So I believe that the way you've been doing it thus far is usually you put your, um, fee into the actual grant application that she's writing, right, is what we've been doing so far?
Yes.
You can get up and speak, Shannon, I'll just speak.
Okay, yeah, I'm just gonna presume that, but I'm Shannon Williams, um, I'm Gateway Grant Writing Administration. I've been writing grants for cities and counties for almost nine years, so I've been in the North Florida area primarily. Um, what I normally do when I, um, when we have a grant that we want to pursue, I produce a proposal, and I will let Sue know, this is how much work it would take to complete this application, this is how much fee would be to complete the application. The application is separate from administration fees, most of the grants that we try to pursue, we try to pursue that have administration fees already built in, so that we don't have to come and ask for it ad rent from the town, so, so that's how, um, working would be as a vendor would be. If you have questions, I can answer.
I have a question.
Ask a question.
I listened to a proposal at the Waukesas meeting when she first came.
Well, I'm, this is my first feeling, I'm thankful, I was, I was conducting that meeting, and, uh, and Shannon got up and spoke to you and everything, yes, and I, Sue was sitting over to my right, and said, do not let her get out of here, and you put handcuffs on her, and signed something, okay?
And I'm gonna work.
But I took the way I wanted, because, listen, it's tough, we all know that, when it comes to the finances of a small community like this. And we live by grants, that's the only way you're ever going to accomplish some of these goals. So to sit here and stick your head in a hole and say, well, we're just gonna wait, and this is hard, he has done an excellent job for us over the years. Franklin and I have been dealing with Fred Fox for, I know for twenty-five years, about at least, uh, and maybe longer than that, so, uh, but he quote CDVG, that's his thing, you know, and he waits until our store gets up there high off his. Merry Christmas, I bet, you know, just like that, he just shows up with this thing, and he said, oh, you gotta do is basically sign here, and I will get my commission off the backside. That's fine, he doesn't want to put up with it. And for the people that don't know this, Fred Fox retired from the state of Florida when they started doing all this stuff, he said, ooh, here we go, I'll make some money from this, and he's been very successful. Now, uh, but, Shannon, and how she does it, and how, what she will do, is all, just like Sue just said, all the other stuff that's out here that is available. We do not have the manpower or the expertise to do what she does, and I'm sitting here saying, oh, sign something, let's do something right now, so. Because it will just, when you go to places like La Cua, Gainesville, these other places like that, all of them, Shannon's been working for Lake City almost exclusively, um, they all have this, you know, or they have somebody that does it on the side, a part of their job, or some, you know, to that capacity.
That grant writer's true.
You don't mean I had to go write a grant today?
And that grant writer's for sure.
Everything, everything, so, that's my opinion, that's my stance, and I'm here to stand by it, so.
So ma'am, is it tiered service fee, is that how it works? Hey, I know that, I know that your fee is covered in most of the grants, but if it's not, they're like, so you gave Sue, you get through a description.
We, we go into a negotiation, I would give her a proposal price, showing her, maybe even some grants that I've done in the past, and how many offices Sue's completed, and how much, um, manpower. Some grants require you to have public meetings, or you need to go door to door and take surveys, things of that nature, depending on what they are. So, um, some of the grants that we've been doing have been fairly straightforward, and I am completely honest with the board, but not trying to double, you know, charge. I've been working with the fire department, they've been giving me half of the content information, so how could I charge you much of anything, when they're already giving me a lot of the data for those grants? So I look at each one differently, depending on how much data I need to produce, or how much I'm being given, um, what the price would be, yeah.
Jeff, you got anything to tell you about this, I mean, I've been working with you on this.
It's a smooth and easy process.
Hurry.
The, what it does is opens up opportunities for us to.
You don't want to miss those opportunities.
If you don't know how to, you know, express goods, if you don't have an open door, you can't get inside, but if you don't know where the bill is at, you can't do it fearfully.
And I would ask you to grant, correct?
Thank you, a lot of them are expedited in a way, by the time we find out about it, if you're only meeting once a month, even every two weeks, sometimes, um, you, that authority that you're giving the mayor is important, because I'll be able to work with him, and not miss a deadline, because we're not having a, a council meeting in time to submit, yeah.
So what do you need from us?
To get a letter of approval.
Take a second on the proposal.
She's gotta find track.
She does have it.
In the year.
Mr. Owen has it.
Well, she looks good. She didn't leave anything out, I can tell you that.
No, you're.
My kids hate it.
I'm sorry, you're not.
She's a grand mother.
She's up her own bases.
We have done it.
I make a motion to approve the application of Gateway Grant Writing and Administration, Administration, third of, and I, and I wish you will.
Thank you.
We have a motion in a second, any of this discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Go, go, Shannon. Thank you, please, Miss Shannon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
All right.
And thanks for giving that authority.
Thank you for coming in. You're welcome, thank you, yeah, I'll be as, as many as I can, you know, at least once, once, you know.
Thank you. Okay, next on my agenda is, um, two thirty-five East Main Street, I'm gonna give the synopsis before I let Mark speak, if you don't mind, okay?
Yes, ma'am, synopsis away.
All right, yes. So, um, I don't know if everybody's familiar with this, uh, property, but it's on, on East Main Street, there are pictures in your council packet. Uh, the owner of this property is Ms. Toni Kikensy, she, she owned a mobile home on the property that was destroyed in a fire on December fourteenth of two thousand and seven. So seventeen years ago. At that point, she was granted a hardship variance to live in a recreational vehicle due to the exceptional circumstance that she had, and she, because she had lived on the property since nineteen ninety-five, and while she lived in Levy County since nineteen eighty-two. In September of twenty eleven, so about four years later, Ms. Kikensy received a code enforcement violation for using a recreational vehicle as a residence, because it violated section two point oh, two point oh four of Orlando regulations, and then later ordinance twenty-one oh four that we passed about three years ago. She was given, at that time, she was given one year from October twentieth, two thousand and eleven, to obtain a dwelling of at least nine years worth of it. The most recent complaint that I received was regarding the fact that Ms. Kikensy moved from the recreational vehicle that she was given the, the, um, the variance, the hardship variance, to a different, a new recreational vehicle. Then, one of her family members erected a whole barn around the recreational vehicle without pulling a permit from the building department. Now, what's important to note here, because we're dealing with two different things, is that in order for you to have a building permit, for something like a whole barn, you have to have a primary structure. She does not have a primary structure, she just has an RV. So that was another issue, is that Mike couldn't even issue a permit, because there is no primary structure. Mike and I completed a site visit, and of course, Mike is here tonight, we completed a site visit on January twenty-fourth. We tried to discuss with Ms. Kikensy a couple of different options, like selling the land, moving the RV to our RV park, and then paying with the, um, the proceeds from the sale of the land, you know, for her quad fees, she was adamant she did not want to do that. Um, she told me that the situation is not temporary, and she has no intention of moving the recreational vehicle to our RV park. The code enforcement board met on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, they could not come to a conclusion at that time. She and her daughter, who is the other owner of the, um, the property, were at that meeting. Then we had another meeting last Wednesday on. Then we had another meeting last Wednesday on March 27th. And again, very lengthy discussion, but ultimately, the board voted that there was no violation due to the lack of follow-up on the part of the town council. Because so many years, thirteen of them, to go back, um, passed and nobody, you know, did anything about this, about this violation. Uh, three of this, this is just an aside, but three of the six board members do live on, from the code enforcement board, do live on Main Street. The reason it's coming before you, and Mike and I were pretty adamant about this, is that if this violation is allowed to remain unchecked, the way it is currently, you're gonna see an influx of recreational vehicles parked in Rossum. We get this call, and Wendy can back me up, we get this call at least once a week. Because obviously, it's very hard to find affordable housing nowadays. People are using this as a new way to, you know, move someplace. And they're saying like, "Hey, do you have any, you know, vacant land, and can I bring an RV to, you know, to the town of Rossum?" So this is the reason we're here today, and there's lots of, you can see in your package, there's lots of, you basically got everything that the code enforcement board got, like I said, there's pictures in there. There's minutes from when this came before the council back in 2011, again, when that was, um, issued, the code enforcement violation. So we're here tonight to discuss what to do, and Mark, take it from here, now you're up.
So I just wanted to say, Ms. Sue is my grant writer. So she covered everything, so thank you, Ms. Sue. It shouldn't take anyone's evidence, but I appreciate it. So I'm here partly as are the code enforcement board. But the other part is, I think there is, there's, I think, two things. One, the code enforcement board really doesn't understand what authority we have. There seems to be some confusion as to that, especially when it comes to legalities. So there was people that didn't wanna make a decision because we didn't have attorney more on there, and we didn't know really what we could do. So that's one. The other one is, the, she has been there for, since 2007, in this mobile home.
RV.
RV.
The original.
The original.
The mobile home burnt.
Right. It burnt in 2007, right? Sorry. So she's been in this RV, then that one, something happened to it, and she got a new one. But it's still an RV. So part of the code, so we, we are saying no violation from a code enforcement board standpoint, only because it's been allowed to go on for so long. That's part A. Part B is, I, I don't think that we're gonna get an influx of people, I know you guys hear calls, so don't come at me because I shoot back, of people wanting to be allowed to bring, to buy a piece of land and bring an RV park here. There's an ordinance that readapted in 2021 to prevent that. So that is not a concern for some of us on the code enforcement board. Because you cannot do that now. There's a current ordinance that prohibits that.
Okay, so my question would be, if the current, the previous would allow her to do the old one, so once she changed, does it not let go of it?
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
That's the issue.
But if you look in, if you look at the letter that she wrote, um, it appears that, like, when this property changes hands, that that will never happen again.
Correct. So my proposal for the council against my friend Sue, and my friend Mike is throwing dakers at me right now.
Oh, I agree. She really is saying, oh, we're glad.
I, I don't, I, I think when she gets to a point where she is no longer able to live on her own, she will move with her daughter or sister, wherever she's gonna go. And there's, at that point, it will not be able to have an RV on it.
Is she related to the people that stay right, that's out?
I'm so sorry, Mr. Schuler, I'm a newbie, I've been here for years, I don't, I don't know. All I know is you two are related, that's all I know. I don't know about any other relations in the town of Rossum. So that is a question for something else.
No, she is not, I appreciate that, no, she is not.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, Ms. McKenzie, you never know.
Wait, Elijah, I'm not finished yet.
What?
So the other part is, and this has, that is part of our resolution is to, to note that there's already a resolution in place to prevent new people buying land and putting an RV on it. That's already there. The other thing is, when she is no, no longer able to occupy that RV, it will be a not issue for this particular property. So I think that in the resolution, there should be something to protect people who are currently or before 2021, currently living in that situation. We're already becoming a mini San Francisco, there's homeless people walking the streets already.
Everybody.
Are we really trying to make another person, an elderly woman homeless?
No, I don't agree with you, no.
Hold, hold on, Mr. Elijah.
And displace her from her property? I, trust me, a real estate agent, I get it. Property values, I, I get the whole thing. But displacing somebody that's been allowed to live in that condition that has worked for her because we did a new ordinance two years ago, part of us on the code enforcement board struggle with that, and part of us are okay with it. So two front things, we need to know what authority we have. And again, we're not trying to change an ordinance. So let me be clear on that. Nobody's trying to, on the code enforcement board, change an ordinance. We're trying to find a resolution for a resident that has been here for decades, and it's the same type of structure that she moved into from older to newer. She didn't put up, pitch a tent or do some other type of container home, condominium, or anything like that. It was just a different type of RV.
A bigger RV.
Figure RV. And the pole barn situation, they have already agreed to take that down if it's an issue. Am I right, Ms. Sue?
They would have to take it down because.
But they, but they agreed to it.
Yes, yes. They cannot have a building brought off.
Right, they agreed to take it down. So that is my two cents. Elijah?
All right. My concern is about Ms. McKenzie, been there a long time. What I'm not understanding, she's been there a while. Is my boy up here, are we trying to make her not live there again?
But no, that's not what I'm saying.
Because, and see, he's saying the code enforcement board, which I assume that he must be on it, I ain't know he was on it, see? I'm gonna live, and I had no meetings about that, why haven't you been on it?
Yeah, we did, we did that two years ago, three years ago.
Two or three years ago, my fifth brother, David.
Because the code enforcement board, we do that, who else is on it?
Tyler's on it.
Yes, she's on it.
Right, but we, we told the, who?
Natalie Thomas.
Well, that's because she's not going to the meetings.
He wasn't?
Okay. Well, that's not the issue at hand here, Elijah.
Yeah, that's not.
I'm on the board.
Yeah, but he have killed a man.
Okay, Elijah.
Okay.
Yes, but I would like to ask for some type of resolution before our next code enforcement board meeting on the main board. And I think we meet here again in two weeks, right?
Yeah.
Because we, they met last month, about this very issue, no resolution. We met last week, no resolution. Now we're gonna meet again in April, and I would just like to have some type of answer for this resident. So yes, sir, that's it.
Anybody else got anything?
I do. Has, has Ms. Kokensy been to the meetings?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or in the yard.
Have been to the meetings?
Of course, I mean.
So I think I am in agreeance with you, but I think the only way that that would work is if they signed some sort of release of liability if something happens to them in that mobile home.
Exactly.
Not only that, but I also think that we would need it in writing from Ms. Brock. Because once her mother passes, she will be the heir to the property.
Right.
We need, we need something in writing stating that they're gonna move that off of it. Because I, me personally, I would, because of this, this situation is very unique for the fact that she's gotten so many passes. And the fact that she, she put a new one in there is kind of disrespectful, you know? But, um, being her situation, her personal situation, knowing that she's got a lot of health issues going on.
Yeah, ma'am.
You know? Because she is asking to keep her dignity there. I think the only way legally that we could do it would be for her and her daughter to find, to sign, um, release of liability forms.
Would that be true, Shannon?
No. Land use law is, and this is one of the basics of land use law. It is not determined by personal circumstances. It is determined by the situation of a particular piece of real estate. This lady obviously has hardships, she has appealing circumstances. Uh, there is sympathy involved, there is empathy involved. But you can't just rig the law to accommodate that. You don't have that kind of authority. Because in addition to everything else, if you do it for one, it's wrong to even do it for one. But if you do it for one, you're just opening a floodgate because everybody's gonna come in and give you their sad story, and there are a lot of sad stories out there. And you can't let that determine how you apply the law. I have one question, though, that I would like to take out. Do we have a copy of this, you described it as a variance, or somebody did, of, of this 2007 variance, what it says?
No. We have minute meetings, minute.
Did you go back to 2007 or did you just find this one from 2011?
Because I, I, I can tell you this, I mean, there, there, there's some intimation here that there's a grandfather involved. That if somebody was in a particular situation to their benefit before the ordinance changed, they have the right to continue. However, she did replace it with a larger vehicle. That would probably vitiate any right that she had. But in addition to that, if what she was doing was not lawful at the time, even though somebody extended her some, uh, relief, if it was not legal, you can't possibly have a right grandfather that didn't exist beginning. So if she was not lawfully occupying that, that vehicle at the time, she can't claim to be my grandfather in theory or otherwise. Overall, the, the basic thing here is, and, and you know, I hate to sound like Simon LeBrie, but it's my job. I don't think her personal circumstances can dictate how you do it. And getting her to sign a release or anything like that, and sitting here and saying, "Well, as long as we're okay with you dropping it, you know, uh, then, then everything is, is resolved." Legal. I can't tell you what you can do in your discretion, but I can tell you what to say.
Any rest of the council got anything to say before we begin speaking?
I'm all for property rights, but I don't wanna see a whole bunch of RVs start popping up.
I don't think it's gonna happen. You guys like that day, I don't think, I don't think it's gonna happen.
I, I guess my question would be, we've allowed this. So where does that put us from a legal standpoint in what we could be liable for? Because if it's been allowed and then something happens tomorrow, where are we at? Because you gave her.
You're talking about liability for?
I mean, it would be a person.
For what happens? Like burning the hammer?
Yes. Yes. That's the reason why I had said for her to sign a release of liability.
That, that's, honestly, that's the last, that's, that's what she would do.
That's the only thing that's an issue.
Right.
Well, no, it's not the only thing that's an issue. The issue is whether she's lawfully occupying that vehicle.
But she has, and so, so if you're anymore, if, and this is obviously hypothetical. If we force her to move and live on the street, and she sues the town of Rossum for allowing her to do, to live there for twenty years?
Very long.
Well, technically, she's, she can't because she's in a, after, once she moved and put a new structure on there, although, because they were, she was allowed to live in the previous structure, and it was supposed to be for a limited amount of time. So she got away with that structure and moved into a. It's still there. Right, but she's not living in it. She's living in a bigger structure and at the pole barn, which is another violation on top of the violation.
That is.
Doesn't that, that, that washes away the first agreement, if there was an agreement that was.
You can't change the best you might do in this situation. Four months.
Four months, she got left in for a year.
Can she move back?
Did she move to the old one?
No.
No, because it's full mold.
It's full mold.
It's leaking, it's full mold.
Yeah. If you wanna do what, what might be feasible and, and still conform to the law, this is possible of giving her a particular amount of time to either leave or come in with counsel. And with counsel, an attempt to convince this counsel that she has a legal right to stay there. Now, I gather from her circumstances, she's not gonna have the, the money to hire an attorney.
Her kid's money.
But, but even if they don't, she qualifies for legal aid. Plus attorneys do the pro bono stuff. If there is some argument to be made that she has a vested right to stay there, uh, I think extending every possible courtesy for her, perhaps the council would wanna listen to it before the hammer fell. But it has to, there, there has to be a finite period of time. So if you did that, you'd wanna give her a certain amount of time to come in and persuade you to do something else, or.
You can vary, not, well, she had ninety days for something, or did I?
She's had ninety days of leave, right?
Right. Well, and the issue is, in the ordinance that we passed back in 2021, it gave me the ability to give up to a ninety day extension due to a hardship in what I said to the code enforcement board, but I didn't feel comfortable giving another ninety days because she had seventeen years. You know, I mean, if we were in year one of this, it'd be one. But this has happened over and over and over. This is not the first time.
And she is aware of it, in the meeting minutes, she stays in those minutes, that she was aware she had a year to stay there, and she chose not to leave. Whether it be circumstance or not, she was aware of the time limit for the marriage.
In addition to the fact that when her daughter got up to speak at the code enforcement board meeting, she said wherever she lives, and I think she lives in Trenton, but I couldn't remember. Wherever she lives, she said, "Well, I can't have my mother come on my property with her RV because it's against the law." And we were like, exactly.
She was, she was. Thirty-nine, I think, nine.
Wherever she lives, I mean, it's against the law, that's the bottom line, it's against the law. So they, I mean, when she got this new RV, why not just put it in an RV park instead? You just assumed that it was gonna be okay. She said she can't have her allowed.
But she gonna have to move. The RV park here is gonna be for, what, six months? You can't.
Yeah, in addition to the fact, yes, there's a C section, it says you're not allowed to live in an RV here and there. That is also true, that's another thing I want to go through. You have to leave and then come back when you're left after a twenty-four, forty-eight hour period.
You had to take the RV with you, right?
Mm-hmm, drive around for a day and come back or whatever.
There's an old saying from none other than Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes, which is, hard cases make vague law. It's our case, everybody feels sorry for us, I certainly do.
Right, I know you do.
You can't make it the law. You can't let it mold the law based on one example.
I don't let you talk to this lady.
Please, Lord. We, we, no, man. Uh, I have to agree with your turn, yeah, they don't say that.
What?
But he's got a point to say. Uh, we should allow her to come in and stay her case. Like this one?
Say it again.
We should allow her to come in and stay her case. She, she, she know it, she know it. But I guess I'm missed up here, and I'm here, and, and, and let me say this. I have been to her house. I have sat on that porch and talked with her about this because we are personal friends. I've known her for thirty years. Right. She is tall. Her children are clients of mine, and I've known them since they were children. Uh, I feel for Toni. She is a very personable person. She, she, she has, had a rough time. She's a very giving person. She spends all kinds of times out there at the, uh, VFW, place I think she runs. But I have a job to do right here. I'm fixing to read her statement that we prepared today, Mr. Warren and I, mostly him, no, all of him. With mine and his talking about the situation, but I'm gonna read this to you. The town of Rossum is, is, is at least as sensitive to the needs of citizens as any other locality, wherever possible, to accommodate situations that. to accommodate situations that call for leniency and restraint, as long as the public interest is not compromised, excuse me. But there is a limitation that the law imposes. The town is an entity created by state law and given the authority to adopt and enforce local regulations. Land use is a prominent, and in, in that regard, because it is crucial to the general interest, health, welfare, safety, and the character of the municipality, that the use and occupancy of land be regulated constructively. We've had an ordinance in place for years, making it unlawful to occupy a travel trailer for a residence on private property. When the ordinance was passed, the town recognized that there would be instances where a hardship situation would materialize, where it became necessary for a limited time to legitimize such office space with an authorization of a ninety day waiver enforcement, even the extension beyond that. I'm living proof of that when I, when I had to have my house removed, from when I had the thing, I, I lived in an RV right behind my house. But thank goodness, it's a short period of time, but I like to make a point. I'm gonna continue. This particular situation materialized and was subject of a citation in the year twenty-eleven. Because of the owner's repeated and not by any means trivial personal hardships, it has persisted to this day as a clear and present code violation. It was brought before the code enforcement board recently, and despite the obvious persistence of the violation of data, uninvaded, referred to us for this disposition, fine's fine, that's what we're supposed to do. There is no such thing as a fifteen year hardship, there's just, I mean, it's nothing else than a, that she, she's had ample opportunity. There is no so, there is no so-called grandfathering for something that was also a violation then. If a personal hardship could determine what land use is, it, it would not be allowed, there would be no consistency to the land use process, contrary to state laws and the general interest. These kinds of difficulties that the individuals are experiencing cannot be remediated by turning a blind eye to these regulations. That blind, that blind everyone else. This is assuredly a situation that merits attention and consideration, and there are agencies and institutions with the fabric of government that are designed to deal with that. That is where an answer must be sought, because the town does not have the authority to violate its own law as a presently written and sympathetic situation. What that means here is this, it's just like Bobby McCallum out there being the sheriff. And he's got a friend over here in Bronson that committed a crime, and he says, well, I'm gonna lock him up because he's my buddy, that's against the law, okay? It's, and, and we're talking about doing the same thing, for us to turn a dead ear or an eye to what we have or hear or shorthold to, to follow those things, we have to do it. We had an ordinance that could not be more specific about the subjects of this travel trailer outside the license park, and it is not subject to the being a buried or strategic ignored out of the kindness and charity we all feel. The authority just isn't there, and the current state of affairs cannot be allowed to continue. As much as I would like to say, Toni, just stay right there where you're at, we can't do it, we just cannot do it.
Okay, so from a code enforcement board's standpoint, we find her in violation, we, we did, well, we said no violation, but, so if we find her in violation, we determine whatever fee, daily, weekly, monthly, whatever it is, and we impose that fee, would there need to be a timeline on that fee? And if she doesn't pay the fee, it doesn't move, what will be the next step?
I think you have the discretion not to impose a penalty. I don't think you have to impose a hundred dollar a day fine or anything like that. And I think, under any circumstances, you have to, to give her some time. If she doesn't, uh, comply, then, then a fine comes into play. And also, the enforcement consists of taking action to have the whole situation removed, it gets very, uh, unpleasant and awkward, but-
Wait, wait, I wanted to throw this out there, so if we were to do a two hundred dollar a day fine, like we talked about with Jason Eggleston's property, right? He either lowers the fence to four feet, or moves the fence, or it's two hundred dollars a day, starting on the eighth, that was one of our other violations. Well, we can quit that two hundred dollar a day fee because there's property there. If we impose a two hundred dollar a day fee on Toni Kokensy, what's the property that we're going after?
The land. Wherever the, 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 the vehicle is located.
Are we able to do that? She owns the land.
Oh, sure.
So we go and get, we leave the land.
Yeah.
And then after, we have, I don't know, I'm making this up, I don't know how this works, but let's say that, you know, we amass twenty thousand dollars in fees, and the land's only worth ten, then we can foreclose on it at that point?
Yeah, you could. I'm not advocating doing all of that, actually, but you, you've got to take the next step.
Oh, I agree.
The next step is finding the violation basis and ordering her unconditionally to abate the violation. Then the ball is in her court. She wants to go find legal representation and appeal or this, or the other thing. Fun, I mean, that's just a, a situation, you can only do what you think is right, or what you know is right, and then the other person has to react to that.
Well, just their correction, I don't know if any of us think it's right, but it is the law.
When I say right, I mean legal.
Listen, I have went, this, above and beyond this situation.
I understand.
I asked Mike, Mike, go out there and look at the facility, see if that particular RV can be made, quote, into a-
Structure.
Travel trailer, I mean, a mobile home type, cut the tongue off of it. Bolt it to the ground, I mean, her children, grandchildren, they're in the construction work, they could do all kinds of stuff like that. You know, weld it to the ground, put concrete pad under, whatever, you know, it is just, does not fit that criteria. And, and I mean, I, I, I looked at every angle physically possible that I could, because like I say, she is a friend of mine. But what she is asking me to do, I can't do.
I understand, so Tony Moore, how much time do you feel would be court's discretion? Honestly, I, I'd say ninety days would be my instinct, but it is court's discretion. Fifteen years is not good. Okay. And-
We're not bringing it back up to enforcement.
No, no, we're not bringing it back to the board, whatever they decide tonight is what's gonna happen, it's not gonna go back to the-
Oh, so it's not?
You mean, this is-
My lawyer there, I mean, what your lawyer's saying.
This is being appealed to the board.
Well, I'm done there, thank you so much, I appreciate you. Well, I, I'll take it for flight, that is not what the lawyer's saying, the lawyer's trying to say, I think he's trying to say, he wanna hear outside, he wanna hear what's going on. And that's your lawyer, you shouldn't listen to them.
Well, she has a-
Someone is not going to listen to him.
She has the right to come in and say what she gotta say, I own your land. They, they still doesn't stop us from telling her how this is next.
She has that right.
She could-
She owns the land, she can, yes, she can.
She could have been here or not, she knew this was going on.
I didn't, I didn't know that, but what I'm saying, I have to do with the lawyer, she had, well, you gotta know me, let her come in there.
We haven't made a decision to not learn, we have, we have come to the conclusion.
Thank you.
You know, we have, we have had meetings and meetings and meetings, and the, the board decided that they did not vote to, because of their, some knowledge of, you know, we did not know what they could do, they, they referred it to us.
That's what we're at right now. Who, who, who we telling that? Who, who, who was that boy? He's not on it. Why he don't be there?
Code enforcement board meeting, there is, I think, minus one. The code enforcement meeting is not, you only have four meetings, this is not the-
This is not the election. This is not, this is not the code enforcement board.
Well, they don't be sure lots of the election.
This is, this is not a enforcement, that's a separate meeting.
This is the town council meeting. I just, I just announced, right here. Hold on just a second.
The next one?
The next code enforcement board meeting is Wednesday, April the twenty-fourth. Don't you miss it. I did the same thing at last one, okay, we announced every meeting, and I promise you, it's been several more. Now, on that board, you gonna call everybody else?
Me, Mark, David White, Natalie Thomas, um, David, I said David White, Kyle Durden.
Ms. B.
Ms. B, that's it, seems to be right.
So all these people sit on that board on this adjustment, so, code enforcement. So, the question is tonight, first of all, it is up to us to make a decision on this, and later-
Do you want to hear from my seat, Mike is here?
Uh, if, if Mike, you want to rest the board on this?
I think it's been determined from my perspective that it's a travel trailer, my definition, we gave her an opportunity to go to an architect and engineer to have it reclassified. If she could have it reclassified as a mobile home or permanent residence, she could keep it, she was not able to do that.
Is that because it's not possible, or is that because she's attractive?
It's probably not possible, probably an architect and engineer is not assigned off. It's just the, the, the structure is built differently than a mobile home. It's, it's designed to cool down low, it's kind of lightweight, things like that, uh-
It's got slide.
It's got slide, I mean, there's a number of things, you said-
That's one of the big things, it's got slide.
She said she went to a couple of architects and engineers that just did not sign off, they were not by slide. I gave her that opportunity to be able to issue a comment for a mobile home, and she didn't tell me, for having an architect or engineer to sign off, it's a mobile home. And we extended every opportunity that we could to her.
But we did.
Well, I, I say this, and I'm through it, I'm gonna say this, stand up and say it. To me, Bronson, I was born here, I had to go to Bronson, seemed like, we don't have nothing happening here. Seemed like the same people that liked you, loved you, voted you in, and you're cast those kind of people. So, wanting a little bit of something, uh, not all of it, uh, are like that, I'm not gonna accuse everybody, so I'll be lying if I did. But what I'm saying is, the people of Bronson, they want something. Now, where it hasn't been there, they got people in Bronson that don't have to ever have here. That's why Wilson is going, that's why Chifman is going, and we ain't got another, and we call ourselves the county's chief, just saying. But in that way, it is, but what I'm saying is, these same people that vote you in could vote you out, and I'm gonna take you to the board.
And that's the, the primary place. All right. One just pleasure, the council.
I make a motion that we, um, send a notice to Ms. Kokensy, giving her ninety days to, uh, get within the limits or which is possible or she's not.
With the opportunity to come forward, please, to come, to have an appeal, answer the fellow's appeal.
She's, I, actually, under our, our general ordinances, any action we take, she has a right to appeal. But I, I don't disagree with you that, that mention within the body of a motion or the resolution would probably be the decent thing to do. After all this time, you know, she deserves every consideration.
Have a motion, Admiral.
I'll say it.
We promptly moved to six, any other further discussion? All those in papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that would be four on one.
I think so.
It'd be three on, you need to vote.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't ask you, I didn't, I didn't. And, and again, I go back to where we are, we have to follow the law, I mean, it is, I wish, I, I wish there was some way I could change, without it. Then we, we fall out of our, like, whatever even we call it, humanity here, whatever. Now, the thing right now, what I'm fixing to do is try to help her in another way. And that's gonna find her somewhere in there to go. There's opportunities around here, I mean, she just gotta get, you gotta just, because like I said, she's a friend of mine, I don't know what to do.
I think the decision may help her more than anything else. A final decision tonight may help her situation more than anything. She's been kind of open to air, don't know, don't know, for all this time, people, board meetings seem like that, I think a, a good final decision will help her and her family make some decisions and give her a good place, and I think they can and will.
I mean, she could, she could move to one of the trailer parks.
About four hundred dollars a month.
We, we're fixing to have two of those, that includes, that includes utilities and stuff. So, I mean, we're talking about maybe a couple of hundred, maybe a hundred dollars a month more than what she's having paid right now, I don't know.
There's also social services available.
Yes. Exactly.
Really, any other decision is more discriminatory toward all the citizens in the city, I, I think this decision is. I mean, this, this attorney board, I mean, this is pretty succinct. Okay, we have to not uphold the law.
All right, so, so next.
All right, next up is, uh, code enforcement tower associates are bringing a B map remediation plan. So, the town, if you guys noticed, we're located within the Silver Springs and Upper Silver River and Rainbow Spring group and the Rainbow River Basin Banter Plan, all of that stuff. So by law, we're required to submit a wastewater and/or onsite sewage treatment and disposal systems remediation plan. It's required by the Clean Waterways Act, the giraffe was due to FDE by February first, the final plan is due to FDE by August first. So just to let you know, this is an unfunded mandate by the state board, no choice. So Mid Tower Associates is gonna complete an analysis to prepare a report to address the following FDE criteria, wastewater treatment plan, B map remediation plan, and LSTDS B map remediation plan. The fee for the giraffe plan, which they've already done, it's been under January first, is forty-seven hundred, and the fee for the final B map remediation plan is five thousand, and that's due by August first. So, it's a root house project.
We don't have, we don't have a choice.
You don't have a choice.
You do know we have a choice.
Unfunded.
Yes, they got a lot of passing down, just like the communication stuff for the, for the emergency services, that's four million dollars of unmandated stuff they have, county has to do.
Here's, here's, here's your project, you do it.
Four million or? No, it was crazier, that was like twelve million.
State conference, they get that.
All right, pleasure board.
Uh, make a motion to have the quote from Mid Tower Associates.
I second.
We promptly moved to secondary, all those in papers signify by saying aye.
All right, last thing on my agenda is community movie night, so I think we've already decided on a date, um, I'm gonna work tomorrow with the, um, whatever you said, remember whoever it was?
The county.
The county, just make sure that the date's okay with them. Um, this came directly from Swank, of course, that's the people that we signed up to do the, um, the movie nights with. I, I just picked a couple that were new releases, like Barbie, Teenage Mutant Ninja Turtles, Little Mermaid, Super Mario Brothers, just a thought. It depends on what you guys are looking for, I'll keep looking for little cats.
That's what I'm gonna say, like, you have to pin on the target.
I mean, anything on this list, you can go, these are just, I did kind of newer releases, I was thinking you probably want to do something newer as opposed to-
I like to hang over. I like the Kung Fu Panda.
It's not out yet.
I don't think it's out yet.
You don't come out to the seven, so, so if we did something before school, we can do that, but we can't do that now, it's a reach.
Up to you guys, so, we got a whole list on there.
Well, who come in there?
What's, what's wrong with it, is that the new trailer, the chocolate factory?
The, the newest, uh, they are version.
Well, who come in there?
What is it?
What, what's doing, who come there?
Last year. We had our kind of age. We had our parents aged.
We have, we literally have from one to eighteen year old.
We had fifty, sixty kids.
What kind that, um, that transforms?
Yeah, I like.
I think that, um, that'll engage all ages.
That's, that's what I was gonna try. I just watched it, it's a good trend.
Being all that sound?
Yeah.
Kid friendly though, I mean.
Yeah, there's no.
Yeah, it's a dream.
You know what Transformers is?
Oh, even my brother knows.
I like Transformers. We didn't know what that crumble crap she was talking about was.
It's not crap. Don't look at your eyes. They don't, they just sit now, wow, that's good.
I like Transformers.
I like Transformers, I think that would encompass.
I think so.
Uh, he goes.
I did this for the kids now.
Right.
No, I know, but it's gender friendly, it's age friendly, I forget what Transformers.
Really is.
You seen it?
Yes, I love Transformers. Transformers have a. I'm in, I would love, like, three D and R.
I know you'd be there anyway, but just wanna make sure if you seen it, it's.
Fun, yeah.
You get a Transformers?
I might get a college.
You get a Transformers?
I'm gonna get a Transformers.
Okay, I'm just making sure it's good.
We're gonna extend the bank to the close.
You good with that? You good with that, Transformers?
Yep, I'm good. Anything, anything, giving back to the people, I'm good with it.
Alright. So, I think we're, you ready soon?
Yeah, so. We can extend it to the, the ones again, like we did last time, if they wanna do stuff.
I can, but you know, that will be out of school, so I don't know how I like to be.
Do we have an opportunity to bring in the fire department?
Yes.
Like.
What's that?
To have them raise money. Have them raise the money.
Oh, they can do like drinks, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I feel for the kids to get to know the fire, firefighters.
Bring a new fire truck, bring a new fire truck and all that stuff.
So, we do, we've been trying to do community movie night, movie night.
Yeah, we can have.
It was in the park, we have a gym. So, we'll come in, it's in the evening, part of the city will be there, and it's open to everybody. We used to have clubs, but it's gonna be during school break to raise money. So, we didn't know, maybe if the fire department, I mean, you're not gonna raise a thousand dollars.
Yes.
Couple hundred bucks here and there, you may raise, if you guys want to, if you don't have to.
But you can be engaged, yeah.
In April?
You could do, you could do drinks, and I have a rock on.
If you're good, if you're good with it, we could do, we could do.
One and a half.
I'll, I'll bring it real.
So, they have like three days off.
Yeah.
Our officials bring.
I'm gonna just ask for, I'm gonna just ask for donation, and, and we want some of them, just ask for donations for the fire department.
You have a book?
No, I have to sell stuff.
Sell it.
Yeah, sell stuff.
I don't know, fire department, sell goods to the community.
Sell stuff.
Yeah, you can. Well, the hundred thirty dollars for a hammer, huh?
Yeah.
It's a fundraiser, okay.
I mean, if you do, if you do hot dogs, we just do a dollar.
That's fine.
Nothing, nothing.
We, we'll figure those logistics out in the fire department.
You literally say, no, never mind, I know where I live, never mind, just do it like that.
I don't have to go.
So, let me know, uh, Mr. Susan, we have a flyer ready, and then I can make sure I get that sent out, um, at the high school side, and we have to, I see I can find a contact to disperse it through the elementary.
Okay.
I, I agree with, uh, Councilman, uh, Cory was trying to say, I didn't wanna sell, took a minute.
What was the fundraiser for the fire department?
I can deal with, what?
We'll, we'll, we'll figure, we'll figure those logistics out. We should have gotten.
Alright, is that it?
That's all I like.
Okay.
I didn't have anything, but I need to talk about the bucket truck.
Keep bringing it down.
Since I'm busy, we probably put about twenty-six thousand dollars in that much. Uh, it's now, right now, you know, they put pony motor on it to, to milk it, but it wasn't designed for a pony motor. And the mechanics at that motor is about seventy-five hundred dollars to get it fixed.
Is it designed to run off the, got PTO off the truck originally?
Yeah, but they put the.
Put the something as a.
Yeah.
Piece of it together.
Piece of it together.
They tax it, they tax it all.
They tax it, they tax it, um, and I'm afraid that this will get somebody hurt because of the cutoff, and then the one cranky stuff, and then it's losing pressure.
Is this the one that was hit? Oh, this?
It's here once, got it coming back.
The best is get a new PTO truck.
Is the only thing that's wrong with it, the motor?
It's a pony motor, it's not a motor.
That's not it, the original motor that goes.
It's just a motor that runs a hydraulic.
Yeah.
It brings a PTO?
No, I got to talk soon, she told me, there's a quote somewhere.
On a motor truck.
Well, you got to, that's what they tell you.
You can't use car stop?
Trading for some yours.
I just wanna make a point that we need to not say it.
I know that, there's a big place a little bit north of Lake City on I seventy-five that does deal with.
I know that.
St. Uzul up there. Maybe you have a little.
Maybe take, uh, military too, uh, very.
Yeah.
Power trucks.
Over there in Oklahoma.
I seen one, um.
I'll, I'll call, I know somebody, Clay Ledger, Clay Ledger always, in GRU, they always do their surplus auctions. It'll be, it'll be a bigger, it'll be a bigger bucket truck, but it'll be.
They need something bigger, they need to reach the lights in the park.
I was gonna say, these, these will probably go seventy foot.
We don't have that, that'd be good, but.
Yeah, a power company truck.
Not will be?
No, not will be.
We would have some kind of special trade.
Even the power companies that have surplus, GRUs, Clay Ledger, some of Florida, I know a guy, Clay Ledger, in GRU, I'll call them, see what they got.
Oh, y'all look into, see what.
How long do we have before we gonna need a truck?
July.
July?
Wait, don't you do flags, like the fourth of July?
Let's do that.
Oh, Memorial Day?
From May?
Well, we can. We can, we can get a silver, silver.
When was the time when they all forget that, you know, that's.
Oh, that's right.
That would probably be one of the county's creatures, if you had.
We definitely borrow this in the meantime.
Yeah.
Yes, we gotta figure out, you got any budget wise, or we're gonna be looking.
Fire because it's, it's ready to use stuff, um, so we probably sit here some business, um, when people come on and give word, with the, um, the meetings.
I'll send it in the, the, sorry.
That's definitely better.
Fence, the fence.
Oh, the fence?
Okay.
So, the sign, we're still waiting on, Lou Luke?
Yeah. He came last, when is the, when is the, uh, fire?
Curtis, is it possible that you could, um, be looking into like, um, a fence along, just the front part of the cemetery? You go from Double Street to all the way down by Saint John, to a way near. I mean, it, and it, just, just, just the front.
What kind of fish would you look for?
I mean, anything better than what's up there, it, it's, it's, it's like cows in this, it's.
The one that was there is.
Yes, well, I mean, just, just the front side, not, or the, you know.
Like American fences.
Something reasonable, or the, uh, I'm, uh, planning on having a meeting, maybe cemetery meeting, uh, April the tenth.
Okay.
I'm gonna try, I'm gonna drive it, and then I'm gonna run it, run it by the, uh, committee.
Would you tell, uh, uh, we, um, help like that light up there? He didn't mention that, but that's, I, I seen it, I, I already told him about the light last week. I told him about the light that.
It's the last thing?
Light up there. Yeah, I can't see it.
And that other light, the owner, the one that, on the pier, is, uh, be good at it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Alright.
Alright, Jeff?
Everything going on the one? Maybe you need the driver. Well, not much, shifted since last week. Our full total for calls passed month was number eight. Uh, we had eighty-four minute calls, we had towns that were canceled in route, and, uh, fourteen that were fired or raided, with wildfires, uh, whatever, so. Um, we have no missing reports at this time. So, other than that, not much is going up.
Can I do this, this?
Yes.
Only, um, the fire hydrants.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I, sometime I just ride through town and look and stuff, but some of the fire hydrants, man, they like hidden. You can't, you know, it's grass growing around them, and I don't know whether the city cuts the grass, or the fire department, or whatever. It, it's, some of them, if, if they had a fire, you probably need to find a fire.
We know most of them are, but yeah, we don't have a lot more.
Well, we gotta.
We have the inmate work crew.
Immate work crews, take care of that problem, and ride off.
They, yeah, that's supposed to be known that.
Then, on, on the view of the fire also, that's, the fire department usually goes around, checks hydrants and paints them if they need it. That's usually what they do.
So, if, if you've got one in particular, Frank, just bring it to their team.
Yeah, just let us know.
Okay.
All of them, in my opinion.
I know the one down on Times Street, it's kinda crowded.
Yeah, I think somebody wrong, I remember, someone that one had one, married or something like that.
Yeah, there's a short one on St. Mary's Street.
You just really around it, it should be.
I think that number is fifty-five, I think that's the number on that one. I know all of them numbers.
Thanks, Mike.
Good. Our work, we're dealing with a little issue, but, you know, for, for words, we're doing good. Thank you, sir.
Good, no worries.
Alright, uh. Mister Turry, you got anything for us?
Yeah, the only thing, I'll be very brief, conversely, I am trying my help to contact the Attorney General and see where our requests are, or a ruling from them on this question. I'm hoping to have some people, I have called four times, I have already tried to email to the Attorney General's office. When I call, and this is particularly calling, the phone rings approximately ten times, and then cuts off. There's no voicemail, there's no answer, rings, rings ten times, cuts off. That's the number I was given specifically to find out the status of the request for Attorney General. So, I keep trying, and I hope to report something to you tonight, but I can't, cause they don't tell you.
Thank you for trying.
Thank you, it's my job, I appreciate it.
Just keep after mine, there's a little bit to eventually.
Maybe they get, you get their leg rang. No, 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 I, I get their ring and never, and the ring stops, oh, and it goes, ding, 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 and goodbye.
Alright, thank you, sir, uh, committed reports, uh, I think we've been over everything that I've got. I'm not particular situation, uh. Do you think that we need to do something about that, we gotta make a cause of that, that sewer situation, here regardless, because if we ever break in that line, uh, that's a, that's a not good way. Alright, Jimmy, you got anything for us?
Um, I wanted to tell Mister Curtis, thank you for, I saw where you've been trying to hit the pop hoes. Having, I think you hit them five, and thank you so much, cause that one in front, that speed bump would almost take you out, and one of the red light is so bad, oh my goodness.
I called, uh, D O, see, that's D O T, I got in touch with Sam, and I marked it for him, he's supposed to be sending somebody.
It's so many, it's, but.
There's a lot on, uh, School, some more School Street there.
And there's one on Tyra's.
Tyra's, I only hit a couple of them, but it's, it's a couple more.
Yes, sir, they, um, thank you for hitting them.
Yeah.
Um, but I also, so since our last meeting, we were talking about, um, recuperating our pet funds, and the more research that I've done, the more it seems like we're gonna have to assess a fee for the pets that are picked up. And that's the way to recuperate our funds.
Yeah, I just heard back from Laura today, um, she said they only budget for two hundred and fifty dollars a year that they get back, so it's not a lot of money, obviously. Um, and she said it enforces, and I, I mean, it's just, it's too difficult to, they basically just do it when they pick up a pet, or.
Yeah, so, and then, so, when I was, um, I was also seeing that technically in the state of Florida, you must have your, your pet registered, however, the law is open in that reference. So that each county can submit their own, but we don't have one. So, if we were to put up ordinance to register the pet, um, we could charge them, and illegally, we would have to give a, um, notice over legal forty-five days prior to they, to them renewing it. But then that would, that could be like half off picking up your pet if it is lost.
Right.
Um, also, I just wanted to say, cause we said a lot of stuff in the last meeting, um, it is illegal to pass off your dog as a service animal, but it is not. And it, it is, you know, many were saying that it's illegal to ask them, and it is illegal to ask them, however, you are legally able to ask. If the animal is required because of a disability, and you are able to ask what work or task the animal has been trained to perform.
Fight seizures and necks.
Yes, because, this is key, because the state of Florida does not recognize emotional support animals, period. They do not, at all, um, and also the pet waste ordinance for public property, they have to pick up their dog's crap. They have to, it is by law, they have to pick up their dog's crap, which is huge out there in the park, because we have kids that play out there. And we have toddlers that like to take off their shoes, and feel things on their feet and their hands, so, bless you. Um, we should be able to enforce something.
Since you own that, Mister Jenny, I'm glad that you own that, and I'm glad that you hold that, uh, I was talking with Celeste about rules and regulations about picking up the dogs. When I was told, you can't touch them, you cannot get in the street, if they in the yard, you can't touch them, is that right?
It was me that told him, at one point, you understand.
Yeah, I get, if the person, dog is not.
I talked with Celeste too, I talked with you too, but Celeste, she can't trust them unless they're in the road.
But the key factor is, did somebody call and report the animal?
Well, I don't know.
They not just gonna ride through town and pick up dogs.
The dog in the yard, there's nothing you can do about a dog.
Well, I call, I think, I think Curtis went over there, and he, he know what I'm talking about, but I think he told me, no, we got the dog.
Yeah.
We didn't have the dog.
No, they got two.
So, she got four or five?
She got two dogs that looked just alike, and the neighbor had trapped the dog.
I don't know what the rule is, do they have to be in the street for you to give them, and you can't give them?
So, the neighbor trapped the dog for Celeste to come get?
No, no, the neighbor trapped the dog. The neighbor trapped the dog because the dog kept coming and was growling at his mother.
Oh.
So, he trapped the dog, and we, I went and picked the dog up and took it to the pound, but they have two dogs.
We don't have a road, that's not the same field.
We also have.
If that's an aggressive, if that's an aggressive dog, we're like, get it up.
Hey, was it?
You can't go up to somebody's property.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, you can't go up to somebody's property and take their personal.
Not unless you're voluntarily.
Correct, but if somebody's dog is out in the road, or on another person's property, you can come and take them, but if it's in there, if I called on Mark's dog, and said, hey, his dog is growling at me, and they said, but where's it at? And I said, well, it's on his property, and who's gonna come and get it?
But if, but if it's a veteran's way, when it's your.
Well, I don't go and do this.
Okay.
So, my, my, my target was to see how I could get, how we could recuperate some of my fees. And it really seemed like the, the best way was gonna be to target the people who are picking up their animals, because those people care enough to go down there and pick them up. I'm going to get mine, I bust lawn on mine, he's coming home, like, I don't care, I'm going to get mine, and I'll pay whatever fee it is. But there are more people who feel like I do, who are, who are gonna go down there and get their dog, and they'll pay whatever fee it is. And then that comes off of the fee that we owe them, to me, um, and then with the registration, um, that could also be a way to recuperate, but if, but if they get some sort of incentive to participate, you know, half off. Half off of whatever the fee is, I would start at a hundred dollars, honestly. You, your, your dog gets lost, you wanna pick him up, a hundred dollar fee that goes to the town of Rockville, you don't want that, leave it out there.
My point, what I'm saying, if a dog was in my yard, and it's not my dog, why you can't pick it?
Yeah, we can. If it's in your yard, if it's in your yard and you sell, you tell, yes, if you tell us, we can come on your property and get it, we can.
But if it was your dog? And in your yard?
You can't come get it. You should give it admission to it.
But what I'm saying, this is the way that I know she's saying, I'm gonna lift you, sure, that's, you know, you know, uh, the dog, I go over there and do a little bit of work for her, blah, blah, blah. And my godson, he'll go over there, that dog come out there trying to bite him, he tried to get me, but I wanna shoot him. But what I'm saying is, that dog ain't got nothing to do with that.
So that dog was responsible, if you're saying that there's two dogs that look alike, right? So you're saying the original dog that caused all injuries to him?
We went, uh, we went and picked up one, and they went and got it from the shelter.
There's one that caused injuries to Edric.
There's.
I called, I, I.
She knows about that.
Yeah, there's one that did cause injuries to Edric.
I don't know.
They have, they have to call the, they have to call the sheriff.
And this was a wild one, this was like.
That's the thing, here's, but at any point the dog is coming after you, growling around the road, call nine-one-one, just call nine-one-one, because they're going to take care of it. You think about. Because if my, for days.
That would, that would happen.
Okay.
That was the, you could very much for, uh, doing.
Now, no doubt situation.
Uh, just, just, just to add a little fuel to the fire here on that situation, went out to the park Saturday afternoon, first, what's the first thing I see? I see two kids coming back from the gate, pulling out to the compound, and they got a dog running around. And then they go behind the concession stand and, you, you, you know, and it's just, it's every time I go out.
That's why I'm telling you, you could tell them to leave, you can tell them to take the dog and leave, and I'm handing you information that you can ask them.
Cause normally when I see someone with a dog, I ask, what classification is your dog, and they give it right there.
They didn't have to leave, they just run away.
I just, I tried to do anything, I meant to print it out, they just had a situation where a dog bit a child at a park, like, it wasn't a service.
You gotta see that happen, Miss Yoo, that happened.
Tom.
Um, nothing really with the fire station, other than I have, haven't had no complaints for, everybody seems to be very happy over there, everything's going good, they got some. State of station duties and truck check offs and everything, and everybody's been following the, following the rules, doing what they're supposed to do, the station's staying fairly clean. The trucks are staying like they're supposed to do, um, so, nothing, nothing really new over there. Um, I'd still like to come back to something about getting the park closed at night, if we had to bring that up again.
Yeah.
Cause we get, we need to do it, I was, I went out there Saturday night at like two o'clock in the morning, stopped somebody from trying to pull up the dumpster, pull the. Old mattress, old mattress and a couch and all kinds of stuff.
Oh, yeah, I see it too.
Okay.
But see, that's, that's the difference, that's the difference, so he spoke up to get the people to stop doing it, we have to start speaking up, like, we have to, this is our town, this is.
But if we, if the gates were closed at night, we could stop a lot of the, I'll stop a lot of that from when these vehicles can't get past it, and we stopped the donuts.
They get thrown over the fence then.
If they throw it in the fence, then we.
Jeff.
Then we would.
Do you have somebody on staff at like nine, what, nine o'clock at night?
And they have somebody covering the shift.
Do you have somebody like every night of the week, do you think?
Uh, not routinely, not every night, at this point.
See, I, and that's always been the problem, no disrespect, Jeff, I understand, we, we focused about on the fourth, and it comes up. You appoint somebody to take care of the situation, and then that person is not there to do the hard shit or whatever, and then you're loading over to somebody else, and then it. First thing you know, we're right back, the park's open, and it is, and, and I mean, Curtis and you can go out there and open it up in the morning, but then you got them early birds, what the world's going on, you know? At six o'clock in the morning.
It gets.
Terry, Terry, I'm going to flashlight walking around, what is that all about, you know? I mean.
I, I usually go out and.
They see, they see Marcus and after he.
I kill them.
Baby Marcus and is talking.
But I, Marcus. Um.
That in the park?
Yeah. Across the roof. But, um, I don't know, I think we need to look into maybe some gates like the schools got on the roller track system. Um, cause it's gonna have to be some kind of, no, those are terrible, I've had six of those, they break all the time.
Is there such a thing as a remote controlled gate?
Old man.
Would have.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, on a timer.
Oh, okay.
Um.
Don't worry, you pop them in.
Well, that's where you can have the sensor to open the gate on the, on the inside.
They lock it one time, they'll know for the next.
Well, they have, you, you do have them where they can have the sensors on the inside, so if it comes up to it on the inside, they run over the strip or, you know.
We got a quote from Bates.
Yeah, but those, those flip downs, for those flipped out bouncy links. Like a regular, you know, gate, it's not rolling, like that.
And it would close at a certain time.
Those, that would be any cheaper, I mean, you're talking, that's the electronics of it, that's.
The electronics are expensive, but.
So, so the person going out there closing the gate.
It keeps.
We, we, we can replace the toilets out there.
That's what I'm saying, you.
Don't be in the face of the world.
You keep having to replace your toilets every couple months, then you have to, they keep doing donuts on the track or the. Basketball court, you're gonna restructure the basketball court.
Somebody might be on the basketball court.
There you go, eventually they'll decide they can just drive through the fence and drive on the baseball field.
It was like.
If they, if they realize they could, they could drive on the baseball field and start tearing them up, I mean.
Just give it here.
Um.
We probably, we probably wouldn't even have to do it, wait for like five or six months, and people are just automatically.
Yeah, they would.
I still say we get the cameras, test it going in the park.
We're, we still gotta do that, me and Sue are still working on it, yeah.
If you can get that camera where you can take that tag, because nobody gonna walk in there and do that, you should go drive it. Take that camera at the, at the gate, and he drives in, okay, you got it in there at one o'clock in the morning, just like that.
We can't even see the tag.
And, you know, first of all, he's trespassing already, because the park is closed at what time?
Eight.
Yeah, midnight.
Number two, he goes out there and you can put enough of those cameras out there, like I said, my son's got some, one of the goods, you can see a deer's eye or horn or whatever. At a hundred yards, that looks just like us in here, and it, and it, and here's the catch thing, it'll send it to your phone right then.
We, we, the cameras are thinking, we still need to have, the gate, there's no, there's no reason somebody should be out there at two o'clock in the morning.
No. No, I'm sorry. Alright, we continue to work on that timer, let's see what we can come up with.
We start, we start with the camera and then, because the gate's gonna be expensive, whether it's automated or a physical gate, it's gonna be expensive to put across there, so. If we start with the camera, then we could at least stop, kick some of these people, and if they trespass, and they're not allowed out there, and that makes sense.
The problem is, in order, even if the deputy goes out there and sees them at two o'clock in the morning, they can't trespass them without one of us or representative of the town being there.
Go ahead, look at it.
Cause there has to be someone there to write a scoring statement saying that they were trespassing.
Oh. We don't have, we don't have a sign up saying that you in the park at that time.
And there's a sign, there, there's a sign that says it's closed from midnight to five.
No, in the state of Florida, every park is supposed to be closed from sundown to sunup, sorry, I'm saying.
Dust to dawn.
Dust to dawn, that's what it is.
But I think.
In order to, in order to trespass somebody, you have to be there and say, yes, I want the person trespassing, sign.
I like that.
Drop them down there.
We have to do that in school, we have to do the same thing, you have to catch them, they have to be on the property, you can, you have to serve them with the trespass.
Exactly.
Alright, Miss Yee.
Um, nothing, we did this stuff for the movie night, um, just gonna get, uh, um, flyer so we can get information out, because we only got like two weeks before, um, breaking, I'll be gone. I think that'll be a good thing.
Right.
Uh, none other than, uh, I wish I had a meeting April the tenth, that'd be next Wednesday, uh, and. I'm gonna go down there, I'm gonna go, go down to Ace or East College Run and find out about DeChlorian, because I had a, it's, I think it's five hours to fill it up. If you have a container, and I got a container somewhere over there.
I got one at the house.
You got one, that's, that, and I, that would've used it, I'll find it out.
I probably got one at school or something.
I'll let you know.
Dog?
It's, it's fairly cheap, yeah.
Okay. Uh, any other public participation? Like, you got that here? Good seeing you, good seeing you.
Good to be seen, huh, that's right. Uh, here, if you have.
You're deals.
Yeah, when is the very last, um, the advance?
Who sent my U R W testing?
Okay.
Thank you.
We do that about twice a year, you said?
Thank you.
We do that about twice a year, you said?
I will entertain a motion.
How many motions have we paid field?
Second.
Probably the second, all those are papers, six, five, six, nine. Motion saying, motion carries.